Would you do us the honor of calling?
Yes, sir. Mr. Compreras?
Not here.
Ms. Wanoatawo Webb?
Present.
Ms. Haynes?
Not here.
Mr. Mesa?
Here.
And there's Dr. Over... Mr. Overfield?
I'm over here.
Smith, Mr. Smith?
Present.
Myself. Sir, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Let the record show that we do have a quorum of board members and that this meeting has been duly called in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act. Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. At this time, we will have opening ceremonies, first of all, with a moment of silence for personal reflection, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand. ...... Thank you very much. First item that we have on our agenda is recognitions. Item four, recognition of the 2020-2021 Rams and Queens soccer teams. Andrew Hernandez and Rick Smith, welcome.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Mr. Mesa, Dr. Rios, and members of the board. As customary, our district takes a brief moment during each regular school board meeting to recognize exceptional individuals or group of individuals who have excelled in ways that have made our school district and community proud. So this evening, we are honored to recognize the stellar achievement of our Del Rio High School soccer athletes and their coaches. Joining me today is our athletic director, Rick Smith, and he's going to complete the presentation.
Hello, board members. Dr. Rios, good to see everybody again. It's a sign that hopefully we're getting back to normal. I'd like to first recognize two of our outstanding teacher-coaches. They're great teachers, which makes them great coaches also. In the audience, we have our head girls soccer coach, Wilbur Rivas, and our head boys soccer coach, Tony Conchola. We had a really good seasons this year. Anytime we can get into the postseason in any of our sports, it's a success. We'd like to always be the district champions, but sometimes that doesn't happen. Our girls soccer program, if you can see on this first slide, they were the district runner-up. Of the seven teams in soccer, we go by a point system and not necessarily it's always wins and losses. So they were a few points behind, I believe, Alexander. As you can see, our roster, we've got 22 total players. We started out with 24. Only four of these 22 are seniors. So Coach Rivas has a very young team that was very successful this year. So our expectations for next year are extremely high. A note from last year, we were two games, two district games short of finishing the season last year when they got shut down. And at that time, they were leading the district. And the two games remaining were crucial to help determine that district championship. And because we didn't finish, well, we didn't get to label them as the district champions last year. But with all these kids coming back, I think we can look forward to hopefully a district championship next year. Of the 11 players that you see on the screen, these young ladies represented themselves very well in the classroom as well as on the playing field. They were all awarded either a local soccer award or a district award as an all-district selection. And a few of them were even all-academic selections. So we've got some really good student athletes on the girl's side. Our boys' soccer team, let me back up. Our girls were the bi-district finalists, which means that they lost in the first round. It was a close, close match. On the boys' side, our boys went three rounds. Their record in district was eight, one, and three. They were co-champs. They were the region, bi-district champions. They were the area champions. And then they were the regional quarter-finalists. Coach Conchola just told me the team that actually beat the team that beat us actually won the state championship this weekend. So matter of fact, they are in our region. So our region was represented very well at the state tournament this year. Coach Conchola's team is a little different from our queens. Of the 19 on the roster, again, he started with about 24. Nine of these are seniors and nine seniors that played a pretty big role this year. So Coach may have a little rebuilding next year, but our expectations will be the same. We're going to put the best team possible out on the field and hopefully get in the playoffs again. The 13 players that are on the video are all-district selections plus our local award selectees. And we do have some academic all-district selections in this group also. And this last slide shows our two teams. These are crop pitchers. They were not side-by-side without their masks on. So again, I want to say congratulations to Coach Rivas, Coach Conchola. And most important to our athletes for representing our district and our school like they did this year. A great bunch of kids. Thank you.
Mr. Smith, if you got one question for you and Mr. Rios. As we get into the tail end of the year, you know, y'all always have done historically a good job putting together athletics event, awards event. What do we got a plan this year for that? And if so, you know?
What we've done so far is as each sport completes their season, that they have a virtual award ceremony for their kids and their parents.
Okay, so you're not really planning on a year-end overall?
No, we've got something planned with the speaker, but it's hadn't been finalized yet.
Okay.
But as far as the individual sports awards, we've been doing them all virtual. And I don't want to maybe change anything this late because we've been successful. We haven't passed anything among our programs, and I'd hate to do that right at the very end.
Yeah, for sure, we want to be safe and just our kids.
This, however, will be the last of the extreme precautions. And so beginning now, they'll start having their just regular fitness and conditioning, strength and conditioning that happens and the camps that happen over the summer. We'll still take precautions, but not to this level. But we're going to finish the year the same way they started it for everybody else. But come June, things will look probably 80% back to home.
Good job, coaches and kids.
Appreciate it. Thank you all.
Mr. Smith, I also want to congratulate the coaches and staff and as well as you. And we can always do something to recognize their accomplishments, either a banner or something that we can hang there on the fence. Dr. Rios, that wouldn't be too expensive for us to recognize them in that manner. But once again, great job, coaches, and of course, most importantly, the students that excelled academically as well as physically to be able to get this distinction. District is certainly something that we always look for, and we got it done both with the girls and boys. Anyone else would like to say something? Thank you so much again.
Only one word of criticism. Go back a couple of slides. It'd been cool if that was the Del Rio bus instead of Coach USA bus. Nope, I'm just joking.
Thank you again. We have no citizens to be heard. Item five, we go on to reports. First item that we have is a health plan update by Dave Garcia.
Good evening, President Mesa, Dr. Rios, members of the board. Tonight, we have our insurance consultant, Greg Coldaway with Brown and Brown, who will provide us with an update for our health insurance plan.
Welcome, sir.
All right. Good evening, everyone. It's good to see you. Good to see your faces instead of on a screen tonight. We're going to go as quickly and as briefly as I can, but I did want to update you on where your health plan is trending, what it looks like from a funding standpoint, and what we see going forward in the future. So we track very carefully month by month. We review it with your staff where the revenue side, which is the contributions from the district and the employees and the expense side of your health plan. In 2020, we ran a deficit of $855,000. So that was a little bit concerning. We expected it to turn around, but 2021 has actually accelerated that pace a little bit. So through the first two months of 2021, we've run a deficit for this planned year of 2021 of $602,000. So those are not happy numbers to report, but it's the reality of where we sit today. This is a, just visual, so you can see the trend of what the cost on a per employee-per-month basis has happened over the last three and a half years. So 2017 planned year was pretty flat, slightly down. 2018, slightly up. 2019, it started accelerating. 2020, it went up a lot more. And then in 2021, the pace has continued to accelerate. So this is important to keep in mind that these are things we're going to have to address in a couple of different ways. And we'll talk about those ways. So total planned costs, just to put this thing in perspective, 2019, our health plan, we spent $9.5 million. Cover all the costs for the claims for your employees and their dependents, along with all the fees and things to your administrator. In 2020, that with no changes of substance, none whatsoever to the benefit plan, pretty similar mix of people in the plan. Really, nothing of substance changed, but our cost escalated to $11.1 million. So we set about to try to figure out what's going on. Why did that occur? And there are several explanations. The biggest explanation is this, however. We look at the claims greater than $75,000. In 2019, we had seven of those, and they totaled just over $1 million. 2020, we had 10, but they totaled over $2 million. So that almost million-dollar difference in these large claims accounts for not all of that increase, but a huge chunk of it. And we expect normal small increases in medical costs anyway. So this is the biggest explanation I can come up with. COVID had a little bit to do with it, I believe. ......................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................... Physicians at a lower rate, but that number at 130% amounts to about what they're getting paid now. There's not a lot of issues with that. We may do a direct contract with some providers, meaning the school district and our health plan will have a direct contract with a hospital, for example. We in fact met with your local hospital today to explore that possibility, and there was some acceptance of that idea enough for us to move forward. So that can be really advantageous to everyone. And then we look at strategic limited networks, which have much better pricing from our standpoint to the hospital. But there are surgical centers, imaging centers, people around the country in Austin, San Antonio, Oklahoma, where these providers simply do not take insurance. They only take cash. As a result, their prices are about 30% of what we might be paying under our Aetna agreement. We want to take advantage of that. And there is a way to do that where our health plan simply pays them the price they're asking. It's incredible. I can give you, just off the top of my head, a couple of examples or an example to give you a sense of how that works. So we priced out a hernia surgery in Austin. Simple little surgery, and it would cost under a health plan typically about $21,000 to get that done. That same patient can go to Texas Free Market Surgery in Austin and get that done for $4,500. Bundled, all-in, complete, done, everything covered. That's the kind of pricing differentials I'm talking about. So we want to take advantage. We want to make those opportunities available to your employees, even if they have to travel a bit to do it. And to incent them, typically we'll build a plan design to cover those costs at 100%. They don't have a deductible. They don't have an out-of-pocket. So not required to. We want to make that available as an option because one of the other things that your employees are dealing with is you have a wonderful plan with a fairly low deductible, but it's still, it costs them a lot of money out of their pocket to use it. So anytime we can create opportunities where it's win-win and we can reduce their out-of-pocket spend at the employee level, we want to try and do that. So this is an opportunity to do that. It does require a little commitment on somebody to say, hey, I'm willing to drive to Austin. I'm willing to get on a plane, go to Oklahoma City. I'm willing to do whatever, but the payoff's pretty good. So pharmacy benefit manager, without going into all the details, pharmacy benefit managers are Caremark, CBS, Optum, those folks that manage that prescription transaction. And the one, the big ones that control most of the business in the country, they're making a lot of money. And they're making a lot of money off the backs of health plans like yours. So what's arisen is transparent pharmacy benefit manager, where we know where every dollar goes. There's no price spreads. There's no gains, and it will save us money. I've already kind of investigated that. I know it'll save us 10 to 15, 20% on our pharmacy spend. So we want to do that. That's low-hanging fruit. Really no downside to your employees whatsoever to do that. So along with that, there may, there's a program, there are programs out there from the manufacturers of pharmaceuticals. And this only applies to very expensive, what we call specialty medications. Humira would be an example that costs maybe $5,000 a month for that drug. The employers around the country's response to these high-cost drugs is to put a lot of cost onto the employee for those drugs, maybe 30%, for example. Manufacturers see that as a barrier to those employees purchasing their drugs, so they say, we'll help you with that. They have manufacturer's assistance programs, which are designed to help out-of-pocket costs to those employees. Well, if we design the program right and we have the right people helping us, we can not only reduce the employees' costs, but reduce our planned costs by going and grabbing all the money possible from these manufacturers. That's pretty easy to do. It's not huge because there's not that many people taking those kind of meds. But once again, that's a win for your employee who may need that drug and has a high copay. And if we do it right, we can get that copay for them down to $0 or $5. And so we want to do everything we can to protect your plan, reduce that trend line that you saw, but also protect employees as well. So that is kind of where we're headed. We're in conversations daily, weekly about these things. We'll be getting RFPs for providers to bring these solutions in hard form to us over the next months. So that's our process going forward is to, we're planning right now for 1-1 of 22. And what can we do then to change this? So this last slide is more of an internal slide. It's about your beginning fund balances for your health plan. So 9-1 of 20, we started with about almost $1,005,000, and you see the contributions month by month, the claims that went against those contributions, and where the stands now. So projected through June 30, we're projected to be at a negative balance of $2.3 million. So you know, that's what I would consider kind of worst-case scenario. We're hopeful that that does not occur, but we want to be completely transparent with you about what the financial obligations may look like going forward. Any questions from anyone?
I've got a couple, but I think, I'll wait for Josh. I think he's going to be there first.
Just want to say that insurance is always on the top of our interests in regard to employees. And we look forward to finding solutions for this. And I think, you know, when you show us the numbers, we all have your attention and we're ready to work with you in whatever way we can. So I think all of us will have questions. I'll turn it over to Mr. Overfield first.
Thank you, sir. I've got several, and I guess we'll start with... We'll start with the solutions. You talked about value-based, value-based pricing and direct provider contracts and strategic limited networks there. And as you mentioned with direct provider contract, you had already talked to Valverde Regional Medical Center today. You know, unlike San Antonio or Austin and these other places, we only have one hospital. So they can hold us over the fire for whatever they want on that, which worries me. But the other one is when we got into, you were talking about free-market providers and kept mentioning Austin. Austin, 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 and Oklahoma. Is there no, out of the three that are listed here, are there none that operate within San Antonio?
There are. So Green Imaging is an imaging center where you can get MRIs, CAT scans, that sort of thing. They're all over San Antonio, so they certainly are. And give you an example of that, we're using them on some other clients with similar type programs. So you'll see an MRI or CAT scan under their program for under $500, $600. When we see that elsewhere, we'll see anywhere from $800 to $3,000 for those same services. So Green Imaging is widely available in San Antonio. There is a Christus facility that's doing this type of bundled pricing model. The services are fairly limited, what they're doing in San Antonio. We're hoping that grows. But the closest, what I would consider a full-service surgical center that's doing lots and lots of procedures is in Austin, in South Austin. And then Surgical Center of Oklahoma, they're really the founder of this whole concept, and that's a large surgical center. Extraordinarily high quality. I flew up there two weeks ago to meet with the owner of that and tour their facility and understand why we should be sending patients there. It's a quality decision as much as a price decision. But we have clients who are putting folks on airplanes to go to Oklahoma City, paying for the cost because the savings is so great and the quality is so high.
Okay. So I'm sure you're familiar with Baptist Health Imaging in San Antonio. They have facilities all over Medical Center and areas there. Does that, how does that compare to Green Imaging as far as pricing? Would you know on the top of your head?
They're not going to be anywhere close, I don't think. They're not going to be as inexpensive as Green Imaging. You know, it's going to vary by service, but...
Okay. Then you, you talked about a hernia surgery in Austin being about 21K, and then in Oklahoma City about 4,500.
Actually, it's three, just over 3,000 in OKC. They're a little less expensive. It's about 4,500 in Austin.
Okay. So 45 in Austin and just over 3K in Oklahoma City, whereas normally, I guess, in San Antonio under Aetna, it would be 21.
It'd be the $20,000 range, yes.
Is that, that's what we're billing insurance? That's not what the, our employees are paying?
That's what they would get reimbursed after all the insurance discounts.
Okay. And then you kind of brought up something on my last question here that will tie into it. You talked about entities putting people on planes and flying them to OKC. Just while you're talking, I looked up American Airlines out of Del Rio as to what, as a minimum, two people round trip to OKC would go in and be, and we'll put it at about $700 round flight or round trip. And then you have to factor in the spouse might having to stay at the hospital or the, I mean, at the, at a hotel or when they're discharged, might not be able to fly right away, so they have to stay in a hotel. So let's call it $450 in hotel fees plus food and all that. So let's call it $450 in hotel fees, plus food and all that. If, if we went that route, the school district or the insurance is picking up the cost of the flight? Or they have to pay that and then the employee gets reimbursed?
No, it's very well-coordinated. So the, you know, all this is theoretical at this point, but it depends on which TPA, who we hired or administers. The one I'm working with in San Antonio for some clients, they coordinate all of that on behalf of the employee and, and pay it directly, and it's no, it's not a challenge to do that. And, you know, and the other thing they're looking at is, does this procedure make sense to go do somewhere else? I mean, it's going to cost us two grand to get everybody there and back. Not that big a saving, you know, may not do that. But, you know, the, the hernia I gave as an example is just in one example. Total knee replacement, for example, I know the price for that. In OKC, it's just over $15,000. So that's a $60,000 procedure in San Antonio. There's, that's enough savings that make it worth our while to put someone on a plane. So it's, it's a case-by-case, and that is, that is true about all of these solutions that we're going to get much more involved in folks' world and deal with cases on a case-by-case basis. But these are, as far as I know, the only things that are actually trending the cost curve down to do value-based pricing, to do transparent PBMs, to do these things I've suggested. Otherwise, we just keep getting what we're getting, which is continual cost increases.
Okay, and, as I thought of one more thing, I'm sorry. On, on the transparent PBM, I, I don't remember who are, who we use right now through Etna, who their thing is. I know for, for the state of Texas, it's Optimum. I don't know, I can't remember off the top of my head. But I know whatever it is, it seems to be really, really well. Because whenever I have to go pick up medicine, as an example for my wife who's an employer of this, there's almost never a co-pay. Yeah, so I, I'd be leery of going away from something where all of a sudden there is a co-pay that, that suddenly starts to pop up. Because right now, most of the stuff, I'd say 90-plus percent of it, there's no co-pay on anything that we pick up from the pharmacy.
So respond to that. So as far as the user experience, you know, your employee going to the pharmacy to get a drug, with a transparent PBM, there's really no difference from what they're doing today or what you and your wife are doing. The co-pay that you're paying or not paying is a function of the state's plan design, not the PBM itself, right? So the user experience, the member experience with any of the pharmacy benefit managers we may use is going to be exactly the same. What's going to be different is how that claim gets processed on the backside and what we wind up paying for it. And that's where we're trying to save some money. And I could get into, if we had the time, a lot of the things that are going on behind the scenes that we want to get stopped. So, but the member experience, no different than what they're getting today.
Oh, oh, okay. And just something to consider, fellow board members and admin, is let's say we went down this road theoretically and someone has to fly to OKC. You know, it's, they're, they're going to either try and schedule it in the summer or on holidays. Otherwise, it's going to have to be during workdays. And you're traveling to Austin or OKC will put them out of the classroom longer. That would just be something to, to think about. Because I know that issue comes up a lot when we talk about training, pulling them out of the classroom and stuff. But of course, health is a different matter, because health comes first, which is something to think about. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Fell. This is what? Okay, I, I have a few questions.
Yes, sir.
I'll start off with, you know, there's legislation that passed and we have menu pricing for procedures at hospitals. I've always been concerned with, you know, what we're paying here for our employees. So are, are you able to get certain prices for certain procedures here?
Not really. So yes, you're correct that federal government passed a law mandating hospitals to publish pricing. For the most part, they have done that in ways that are unintelligible to any human being, even people in our business. Or they've elected not to do it, because many of these organizations are multi-billion-dollar organization, and the fine for not doing is $300 a day. It was inconsequential to them. So the reality is, there's very little value to, because we're stepping in the right direction, but very little value to law.
Pretty much the response that I've heard from news articles and things of this sort. My other question is, you know, normally, you know, again, referring to what Mr. O'Fell said, employees are willing to travel three hours, two and a half hours.
Right.
Are we looking at possibly, you know, before we felt, we fell in the region, the area of Sinaja. Now we fall like in San Antonio. But is there anywhere we can look at the other side, like Eagle Pass, because they have a lot of facilities and certainly have bigger medical centers 60 miles away? Are we able to look at that?
We would be open to negotiating deals with them as well. I mean, we're not, I mean, we started here today, because that's the most logical place, but we're not opposed to doing contracts with other providers as well.
I'm, I'm just, it, it's something that we look at every year, you know, with the magnifying glass, because we're trying to do everything that we can to lower the cost and, and provide, you know, insurance for all our employees.
When I look at, which I, I do, I know kind of where your dollars are going. Biggest chunk is going right here in your local hospital. Vast majority after that, 70% is going to San Antonio, but scattered, you know, here and there on the rest of it. So it's, it's really Del Rio, San Antonio is where the people are getting care. And, you know, obviously opposed to doing something in other places, but we want to focus our energies on where our money's going, right?
Well, you know, Mr. Colway, I appreciate, you know, the solutions. At least you're looking at something here. And I'm saying that we can be as creative as we can. The only thing we want is quality health, you know, providers and, and services for our, our employees. We know at some point, the cost will have to be passed on to the employee.
Right.
But we're trying to avoid that as much as possible. And, yeah, I, sometimes I think, you know, with limited flights from Del Rio, it makes it hard for our employees to travel to Oklahoma.
Yeah, I mean, and that's just an example. I mean, I want to give you an idea of what's out there, what's possible. It's going to be a limited number of people that are going to choose to do that. We get that. But, you know, we want to make it available. We want to make every opportunity to them to save themselves money and get really high-quality care. And here's the price you pay to do that. You get on an airplane, you get in your car. So it's not going to be, a ton of people are going to do that. But we want to make it available.
Yeah, it, it's, you know, we've looked at so many different things. Sometimes if employees don't have, or, or let's say someone goes for a CAT scan, they don't have insurance, the cost is lower to them than if you have both insurance.
That's exactly right.
And it's, you know, for a layperson, you think like, what? You know, I have insurance and I'm paying more than the person that doesn't have insurance. It's just, it's very complicated.
It is, and I don't, your assessment is right. I mean, that's why these providers who take cash are so much less. And we want to figure out a way to access them for your employees, which we have, we have a way to do that.
But I, you know, again, I appreciate the fact that you do have some solutions, and we're certainly one for you to look at every possible solution. And it, it's kind of bad that we don't have, you know, like News Investigator that show me your bill kind of thing in San Antonio, that they lower the cost of health bills, you know, for our, our employees. But anything that can be done, we certainly appreciate, because we're coming to that point where we're going to have to realize the employees are going to have to pay a chunk of their health insurance.
And I would add, before we move off of this, that these solutions are not without cost to the employee, and that cost is disrupting the way they've always done things. It's change. So they're accustomed to having an ID card with an Etna logo. They lay that down at the doctor or the hospital, and everybody knows what to do, right? This is a little different, and there'll be some conversations with providers who don't know exactly what to do. And, you know, our teams with our TPAs get very intimately involved in directing them and helping them. But it is different, and people don't like change a whole lot. So there's a, there's a price to be paid to implement these, and that price is disruption and change that people are not really expecting. I mean, we'll do our best, absolute best, to educate them in advance and teach them. But at the end of the day, it's change, and folks don't like change, so.
And I just went, so you said, a former educator, as a teacher, I used to say, that cost increase that we got, that pay, is going to go for a premium insurance that is, is going up by that amount. It, it's, it's inevitable, but, you know, we're trying to, again, help our employees as much as possible.
Yes, sir.
Because we look at raises and we think like, okay, 3%, 4%, you know, and, and then, you know, the cost of insurance goes up and there goes that increase.
Yes, sir.
And I'll pass it on to, is there one others? Do you have any questions?
I've got a, I've got a couple of items, which, you know, I don't want the three-hour version, so that's probably the, the delta between page six and page 20. Are these, are these 10 claims for 2020 that are above $75,000 versus the seven or eight claims that were in 2019? Are those wellness-related, or are those are just medical costs for some similar severity issue?
Those are very sick people.
So our wellness issue is, is driving the cost of a, or is it that we, we're trying to say is that, that if our employees are less healthy this year than they were 2019? Or is the medical cost to cover?
I would not say it's that they are less healthy. This is, these cycles where you have a bunch of people that happen to have something all at one time is not uncommon. But, you know, it's just, this is the year they happened to all hit and have large expenses.
Okay.
I don't think the health has changed.
Okay, I think that generically answers the question. And then when you take and you, you queue up, so you really staying on that subject for a second before I go to the next subject? So that, that million-dollar delta, you think that's just cyclical?
I hope so, but the first few months of 2021 have not proven that to be the case.
The other question is, when you, you know, you, you gave some examples of the four initiatives that you've got, that you're planning on, putting a plan together. What high level do you think that that is overall, a 10% delta of?
I'm thinking 10 to 20.
Okay, nice.
Yeah. If we were in San Antonio proper, I would say at least 20. We have some other issues to deal with here.
No doubt.
Limit that, but, yeah, 10 to 20.
Very good. Thank you. That's all, that's all the questions I've got. Good job. Keep that work up.
Anyone else? That's it. Thank you, sir. Dr. Rios.
Forward, forward step forward. The, the solutions that Mr. Colway is recommending, those wouldn't take effect until January. So whatever cost-saving measures we agree with, and of course, we still have to present to the Health Insurance Committee, these savings don't take effect until January. The deficit that we're having right now, and of course, we've addressed it by transferring money into the account, that's just through June. So we still have to work out to keep our plan solvent between July and December, another six months. And, but I wanted to share with the board is kind of like the next steps that we want to do. We're going to start looking at some data with a hospital to see what kind of savings can be generated for the next school year. But whatever savings can't be generated, then we have to agree on how much more we're going to contribute to the policy, because we have still six months to keep it solvent. And we're going to make the decision here at the end of June for, for the, for the next seven months. So I, I just wanted to, to point out the urgency of it. One possibility is that we, through the Insurance Committee, we ask the plan members or, or employees, you know, would you be willing to do these items? And if they vote for it, it will, will then, the contribution, whether it be from the employees or from the district, may not be as high. But if not, then we have to consider the alternate. Either the district pays more, or the school pays, or, or the employee pays, begins to pay. But this decision has to be taken in June. And I just wanted to say that the updates that we provide to y'all bi-weekly over the next two months will be very important, because come June, we, the seven board members have to make a decision. We'll make a recommendation for sure, but just know that we're a lot closer to that decision than January.
Yeah, and, yeah, and so that, you and I have had some conversation over the past week or so, relying on that. But, and obviously, this isn't the right place, but we need to do that aggressively. That's a big delta that, I mean, $2,000, it's a big chunk of change.
Thank you, sir. Continue with reports out of 8B HB3 update, Irene Cardwell, lap three, middle of the year. Did ever see a report? I don't want this.
Good evening, President Mesa, Dr. Rios, and members of the board. As part of the House Bill 3 updates to the board this month, we will be reporting on Irene Cardwell's middle-of-the-year lap three results. The lap three is actually the learning accomplishment profile, third edition assessment. It measures the skill development of children from 36 months to 72 months of age, including children with disabilities. The criterion referenced ongoing observational assessment has seven different components. It will assess gross motor skills, fine motor skills, pre-writing, cognitive language, self-help, and personal and social skills. Currently, at Irene Cardwell, we do have an enrollment of 358 students. There are 57 pre-kindergarten enrolled students and 301 Head Start. We do have 29 students with disabilities who were not assessed with this assessment. Therefore, 346 students were tested out of the 358. We did have 17 of the 21 stu, teachers who were able to complete 100% of their child's or student's assessments. 12 students where we could not locate for testing out of five teachers' classrooms. The lap three has several components. The two that we're reporting on are the literacy and the math as part of House Bill 3. The literacy framework assesses approaches to learning. How do students learn and the skills and behaviors that children use to engage in learning? Also, language development, the receptive and expressive language. And literacy knowledge and skills, book appreciation and knowledge, phonological awareness, alphabet knowledge, print concept, and early writing. In math, the assessment includes number concepts and quantities, number relationship and operations, geometry and spatial sense, patterns, measurement, and comparison. The graph before you is a five-year historical report for the beginning of the year, middle of the year and end of the year. You will see that at the end of the year in twenty twenty, last year in the spring, we were not able to assess the students. Therefore, there is no data. So if we go back to the beginning of the year for literacy, you'll see that we were at a thirty eight point seven percent. That same group at the middle of the year assessed at fifty five point nine percent. Currently, there is a seventeen point seven percent gain from the beginning to the middle of the year. We will be testing the students in the next couple of weeks to the end of the year for the end of the year results. For math, we also have the five-year comparison in the report. At the beginning of the year, the students came in at a forty two point one percent. At the middle of the year, they came in at a fifty nine point eight percent. Again, showing about a seventeen percent increase from the beginning of the year to the middle of the year thus far. We also did not have end of the year results for last school year. The teachers actually meet with the parents to address the reports and to explain them. This is a very simple way. Have the Head Start, Pre-K and kindergarten teaks alignment. Other strategies include think per share, explore, sight words, vocabulary, open-ended questions, real life experiences, language experiences and learning centers. That concludes the presentation on the update for the middle of the year lap to three, unless anybody has any questions.
Boardman? Ida, um, I have one.
Yes, sir.
In regard to, uh, literacy, is there a list that is recommended for parents to utilize with their children?
There, there is a list that we use. I don't know that Cardwell uses it. I know that we use the TA list of recommended books and Jackie Gurley is constantly giving us the latest books out there. But Dr. Talamontis is in the audience, Mr. Mesa, if you'd like her to answer.
I just wondered if there's reference material.
A specific one for your answer?
We do go by list for the literacy and for the genres of the reading as well. And we also align ourselves with the kinder curriculum and follow the list that they use too, to make sure that their kinder ready when they leave Pre-K and Head Start.
Okay. There used to be a, a program, it's, it's called Thimble.
I'm sorry, what was it?
T H I M B L E. And it's Spanish English.
No, we can, we're continuing to use the owl, the opportunities of world learning, and it has our list for literacy as well. For in-class and for parent engagement.
Okay.
On literacy.
I just, uh, you know, again, for, for reference purposes, uh, you know, they have something to look forward to, um, for the summer and for remediation.
Yes. And we also do work closely with Mrs. Gurley. She does meet with our librarians and she does help us make a order for our library books and books that are appropriate for our children on, at school and at home.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you very much. Dr. Rios?
I wanted to point out, uh, Dr. Talamontis, just wanted to point out that Cardwell is one of the campuses that has done really well in trying to bring the kids back, uh, face to face. And, uh, what was the percentage of, of kids of the total enrollment that was face to face to date?
Today, we had a hundred and eighty two students there. That includes our special ed population, which is the ECSE. And then just to go back on the literacy, we do use the Mayon. And if you, uh, see our numbers, we have classes that have read over two thousand books um, with our, with our parents at home. So we really, really make sure that our students have an interest in reading. But we do encourage our families to come back on campus and we just opened two more classes today. Learn to come back face to face.
Good. There's nothing like face to face, especially the low ones.
Yes.
Overall, you were about seventy percent. Is that by a little bit above the overall face to face?
Yes. Now we are with today's, um, openings.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez. Next item we have on our agenda is item nine, consent agenda. There are some minutes, uh, well, there are no items for this, no minutes for this. Um, there's financial statements. Again, one action will approve all items on the consent agenda. If there's any item that needs to be pulled.
Did we miss eighteen, eight C or no? What, what is eight C? New elementary contract update. What is that?
I have one presentation, Mr. Mesa.
Oh, I'm, I'm looking at my book.
I'm sorry. We still have one presentation.
Thank you. I better look at the, the real one. I, I've got a book, um, again with agenda. It says public hearing and I, I don't know.
They made it special for you.
Nobody's trying to trick me here. Okay. We do have eight C. It's a new elementary school contract update.
Good evening, President Mesa, Dr. Rios, members of the board. Uh, tonight's presentation will be looking at the contract update with JP Sanchez for the new elementary campus. Um, we'll be, um, looking into the scheduled values that we've been working with them on as well as the overall project details. Um, and then future change orders and how those will, uh, proceed for the AIA contract. Um, everyone should have a copy of this presentation to, um, be able to point out some of the details on the scheduled values. There's forty seven line items there. So, um, the high points on these scheduled values is there is a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar allowance built into this, this project currently. Um, the original base bid was at sixteen million thirty four thousand. Through conversations that we had with the general contractor and our new construction manager, we, um, we were able to identify a credit for insulation, uh, which I'll get to in the next slide, but that comes in at, uh, forty two thousand two hundred dollar savings. So the revised base bid would be at fifteen million nine hundred ninety one thousand eight hundred dollars. Um, along with these scheduled values, we also had, uh, two alternate bids. One was for classroom mill work at two hundred ninety two thousand four hundred dollars. And hot mix asphalt for the property at sixty four thousand dollars. So the overall contract amount, um, if we're to proceed with this recommendation would be sixteen million three hundred and forty eight thousand two hundred dollars. And for the insulation credit, uh, the next slide here demonstrates that there was a bid error, um, that our new construction manager was able to uncover. Um, in short, the, uh, during, uh, contract negotiations, they identified that, uh, the mineral wool insulation that was part of the fire stop detail, which is the diagram on the left. Uh, the contractor assumed this type of insulation was also to be applied to the interior walls. After further looking at the documents, it was uncovered that inside the walls is supposed to be a glass fiber blanket instead. Uh, due to that, there is a forty two thousand dollar two, or forty two thousand two hundred dollar credit that, that we're able to apply to that. And then per the AIA two oh one, twenty seventeen, article seven, changes in work, which is outlined on pages thirty two through thirty four. It, uh, gives the language that we need for our change order procedure moving forward. And I've included a flow chart here, uh, to be able to show that through the lifecycle of this project should change orders arise. It would start over at the left, where it's labeled start here, identify issue. Um, that issue would be brought to ERO architects as well as the district. And then ERO would present some solutions that administration would, uh, receive that information. And, uh, then it would be determined if it's something that we, we need to do as a change order. And if so, then administration would present that solution to the board of trustees for approval. If that item was not approved, then we would take the path of no. And it would funnel back to ERO to come up with different solutions for the district. If the change order is approved by the board, then we would take the path of yes, and then the change order would be carried out and we would proceed with that. There are questions?
Dr. Rios?
Mr. Mesa, members of the board. We would normally bring, uh, a recommendation to the board to approve any type of value engineering. There is no value engineering, uh, so we just wanted to explain that the savings isn't value engineering. It was just a correction. So there will be no approval of value engineering because the design is what will be, uh, contracted for to, to, to create that design. So there is no value engineering. That was simply a correction that, uh, Mr. Chapa identified and it turns out to be a savings for us. Should there be value engineering in the future? Uh, we would bring it back based on that piece of the contract. So today we're asking the board to approve uh, the contract, uh, one hundred percent for the design that was created by the architect with no value engineering.
Okay, questions? And before I turn it over, do we, we will be getting a scheduled timeline. That would be after we approve contract sometime later.
Yes, sir. Moving forward, uh, Mr. Henge will give monthly reports on the progress of this project and a couple of the projects. Now that we're back to normal, he'll be making, uh, more of the reports he was previously making, but definitely on, on the construction.
Which will include start date and end date?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I'll turn it over for questions. Mr. Smith?
Yeah, I got just a couple of, of minor questions. Number one is, which is just a curiosity. You know, what's, what's four thousand dollars worth of furnishing and how's that tied to the, the contractor? Was it, was it a matter of line item, but just logically not making that tie?
These site furnishings, I can get you more detail on that. I don't have that readily available.
Does Mr. Chapa have the answer?
Do you have it, Mr. Chapa?
Uh, good evening, uh, Mr. Mesa, Dr. Rios, board members. I believe it's tied into some of the components in the kitchen area like, uh, trash bins and so forth.
Okay. Thank you for the makes sense.
Thank you, sir.
The, the other, uh, back again to, to Mr. Mesa's comment of timing. What, you know, what are we talking about? It's an overall timing plan. I mean, he's talking about milestones to get to the final goal, but we're, we're talking about start date.
Two years from, from the time we give them the order to proceed and then, uh, visiting with, uh, the construction company last week, uh, they'll be, they believe they'll be ready to go before the end of May.
Okay. So we're, we're talking about, uh, school year twenty twenty two?
Twenty three. Next year is school year twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two. We'd open August twenty twenty.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Not school year twenty twenty two. Fall semester of twenty twenty two. No?
No, because this August is twenty twenty one.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. You're right. Okay. Got it.
Trouble's convincing.
Yeah, I'm, I'm nearly got it. All right. That's all I can.
Anyone else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to look at a revised agenda here. We have item number nine, consent agenda. And, um, again, while you look through that, uh, this time we will take the time to read out the donations since we don't have a whole lot, but, uh, Mrs. Gonzalez, would you read the donations while the board members can look at the items? And then if you want an item pulled out, you can tell, let me know. Okay, donations.
Joshua and Elizabeth Overfelt, ninety two disposable face mask. Total estimated value ninety two dollars for Garfield Elementary. American Heart Association, twenty CPR kits. Total estimated value five hundred dollars to Delaware High School. Order Federal Credit Union, five twenty dollar gift cards to Dr. Famine Calvado Elementary. Robert. Robert Chellis Overfelt, sixty disposable mask, sixty cloth mask. Total estimated value a hundred and forty one dollars and fifty eight cents to Lamar Elementary. Food Bank, twenty, two hundred and ninety baskets, total estimated value five hundred dollars to North Heights Elementary. Banco International, Internacional de Alimentos, five hundred Easter baskets, total estimate value one thousand dollars to Dr. Lonnie Green Elementary. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Gonzalez. And once again, thank you of individuals and organizations for making the donations that so much benefit our programs throughout the district. This time I'll ask again for the consent agenda. If there's an item that needs to be pulled out, or if you have any questions on anyone? Then being that there's no question.
I just have a question for Dr. Rios on, on seven one.
What is it?
On the track.
What item is it?
Seven one. I mean, seven one, F one.
F one.
What was the amount allotted that was discussed, uh, last year when the track first came to the board? I don't recall it being three hundred thirty thousand, but what was it?
No, ma'am. Uh, last year we were looking at just a temporary solution. And we were just looking at a surfacing of, of the track. So that amount, th- there was three amounts that were recommended. Uh, one was a hundred and thirty plus, a hundred and eighty and two hundred thousand dollars. The base one, now these are all just resurfacing, not going in there and replacing the base. So we were looking at the most affordable way to, to, to do it at the time. The problem was, one, uh, we had a lot of issues with, with COVID. Uh, the second one was that it was kind of expensive for just a surfacing. Now, a year later, the track is in much worse condition. Uh, now we know for sure that if we just did a resurfacing, it would probably only last a warranty time of two years. So now we're going in and doing, uh, the whole track, removing the whole thing and redoing it. That's why, uh, now the price is, uh, it's almost three times as much. Uh, however, this time we are recommending the blue track with the change of colors and the exchange zones. That's why the difference is so many times this year. And it is a year later in the bid. So, so it's two different projects. This year's more, uh, it's just an entire track and not just the surface. Now, I've, in, in complete, um, transparency, we are looking at a very nice track. We're looking at an all blue track with gray. We're looking at an all-blue track with gray changing gray zones for the exchange.
So what is the guaranteed life when?
The guarantee is five years is the warranty.
Five years.
Which, that's a warranty, and that's when they would like for us to replace it. We should extend it to seven or eight years.
Anyone else? Being that there's no other questions, I will ask for a motion for the consent agenda. Motion made by Ms. Gonzalez, is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Overfelt, all those in favor? Motion carries in. Thank you very much. We go on to administration. Item ten. Consideration to approve the establishment and composition of the twenty twenty-one District Facilities Citizens Committee. Sandra Edlund.
I'll I'll speak to that.
Doctor Reus. As long as we do this by the end of April.
Yeah, I'll just throw out a couple of comments. In not being at all negative to the proposed process of making a comment. I'm just gonna say that maybe maybe I'll choose not to offer up names to the committee. Just trying to make that out. I'm not gonna say I won't, but I'm reluctant about it.
If I may, Mr. Smith.
Sure.
I I'd like to, I guess, in light of what Mr. Smith said in the past, what we've done is we've allocated for a fixed amount of members. And when a board member did not submit a name, then we selected committee members and presented for the board so that we would still have at least X amount of members. So if, should that happen, I don't know if you all just want us to go with the committee members that are recommended by the board members? Or we set a fixed number of fifteen members, sorry, sixteen members in this case, sixteen-member committee, one of them being the superintendent. Would you like for us to just recruit other community members and and recommend them for approval?
Yeah, I'm I'm good with with kind of a hybrid approach is what I'm getting at.
I'm fine with that. True.
Okay.
Okay. Item ten, item eleven, curriculum instruction. Doctor Reus?
Read the recommendation.
Okay. We gave the deadline, we did not approve the the makeup of the District Facilities Committee. Doctor Reus, would you read the recommendation?
Yes, sir. It is a recommendation of the administration that the Board of Trustees approve a sixteen-member Citizens Committee and approve its establishment as presented.
Heard the recommendation, is there a motion for approval? Motion made by Mr. Webb, seconded by Ms. Gonzalez, all those in favor? Motion carries in. Thank you very much. Item eleven, curriculum and instruction, consideration to approve instructional materials allotment antique certification form for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year, Atagamas.
Yes, good evening again, Mr. Mesa, Dr. Reus, and members of the board. Every two years we come before you to get the instructional materials allotment and certification form approved. Under the materials, the IMA is what we call it. And this is a combination of a budget where we can purchase textbooks and materials previously supplied by the state with separate funding received through the technology allotment. At one time, there was two budgets, and now it is a combined budget. Under the requirement, it is that the district superintendent, along with the president of the local Board of Trustees or officers of the governing body of the charter school certify three things. The first one is that the district's instructional materials and technology allotment is only used for expenses allowed by the Texas Education Code, TEC thirty-one point zero two one one point two. For the current school year, the district has instructional materials that collectively cover all the elements of the TEES of the required curriculum identified in TEC twenty-eight point zero zero two, other than physical education for every subject and every content. And upon request, the district would provide the State Board of Education the title and publication information for any instructional materials requisitioned or purchased by the district with the district's allotment. The twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two certification form will be submitted via an electronic version this year to include the school board president's email as confirmation that the school board certified the information is accurate. The certification form, it's in its entirety, is included in your packet. And on the very last page of the packet, you will see where we have to enter the Mr. Mesa's email address that the board has certified the information. The pages before that include every single type of resource that we use that would qualify under textbooks, beginning at kinder and ending at twelfth grade. And it's for every content and every subject in great law. Are there any questions?
This is from board members. I have one, this would include the ethnic studies as well?
Yes, sir, it would.
Okay, there being no questions, recommendation, please?
Yes, sir, it is the recommendation of the administration that the Board of Trustees approves the district's instructional materials allotment antique certification form to be submitted as confirmation of compliance meeting the certifications outlined above.
Thank you very much, you've heard the recommendation, is there a motion for approval? Motion made by Mr. Overfelt, seconded by Mrs. Webb, all those in favor? Motion carries in.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. We go on to technology and operations, item twelve. Consideration to approve contract with JP Sanchez Construction in the amount of sixteen million, three hundred and forty-eight thousand, two hundred dollars. Funding source, twenty twenty bond series and committed funds for the construction of the new elementary school. Bless Hengay.
Good evening, once again, President Mesa and Dr. Reus, members of the board. As shown in the presentation tonight, we have gone through the negotiation process with the general contractor. Going through that process, administration was able to find a forty-two thousand dollar error. So I I think that process worked out well for us. And at this point, we we are ready to proceed with working with that contractor and have a notice to proceed.
Questions from board members? No questions, recommendation?
It is recommendation of the administration that the Board of Trustees approve the contractor contract over five thousand with JP Sanchez Construction in the amount not to exceed sixteen million, three hundred and forty-eight thousand, two hundred dollars for the construction of a new elementary school.
Heard the recommendation, is there a motion for approval? Mr. Smith, make the motion, seconded by Mr. Overfelt, all those in favor? Motion is approved unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Business and Finance, item thirteen A, consideration to approve the renewal. Oops, we're gonna table this one. Doctor Reus. Thirteen A will be tabled? Doctor Reus.
We're asking that thirteen A be tabled, not because there's an issue with the food service company, but the Texas Department of Agriculture has other requirements which must first be met before we renew the contract. We'll be presenting in the Texas Department of Agriculture with information to meet these requirements, and we will bring it back for approval in May.
Okay. Okay, we were waiting for some more paperwork in regard to this item. It'll come back to us next month. Item thirteen B, consideration to approve the resolution to extend the current depository bid contract with Texas Community Bank for another two-year period for the biannual September first, twenty twenty-one through August thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. Amy Childress.
Good evening, President Mesa, Dr. Reus, and members of the board. This evening, I do bring to you the resolution to extend the current depository bid contract with Texas Community Bank. The initial contract for the depository bid was approved at the May fifteenth, two thousand seventeen board meeting with the option to extend the contract for three additional two-year terms. This extension would be the second extension. After, for two years, it would it would cover the September first, two thousand twenty-one through August thirty-first of two thousand twenty-three. We would then have one more two-year extension before we would have to rebid the contract.
Amy, all of this is included in our policy manual, right?
Yes, sir.
Are there any items that have been, I guess, changed from the previous contract? Is everything?
No, sir, there's no changes to the original contract.
Yeah, I did not see any red markings or anything that has been revised.
No, all the resolution is provided in your booklet. After your signature, I did speak with Miss Sylvia Owens today. They have accepted the renewal, and she will sign after we sign. Agrees to continue the bid.
Anyone have a question?
No, I guess I don't really have a question about the contract, say. I mean, it would be good to understand what that what that return's been on that agreement for those reviews and versus previous reviews. But I don't want to hold it up for that, but good to know that.
Fixed on, well, on on the prime.
Yes.
Amy, normally someone from SFE is here to to give us some more information in regard to grants and things of that nature that could be forthcoming or at least, you know, a total amount of grants, Doctor Reus? For, I'm talking about even for the serving line, whether it be appliances and things of that nature.
When they present that item next month, Mr. Mesa, we can have them, we can have them do that. For sure. So they're gonna present that item next month for approval in May? And we can have that be part of that report. Now, for the, just for clarification, either Paula or Amy, the renewal for the depository contract, when when is that deadline?
It has to be, I need to have this into TEA by June first.
By June first?
Yes.
If you wanted that report, Mr. Smith? No? Okay.
I'd I'd like to, I'm not, it's not contingent on this because I trust the process. And and what what we know through visiting this subject before is not just that, but also the transactional ease through, you know, that that we've experienced over the past couple of years versus previous. And that's not putting anything against their competitor because I think they've they've done a really good job as well. I think it's yielding good results, and that'd be good to talk about.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else with a question? And I was referring to the previous item before, but I know that in the past we've had, you know, the issues that we had the first year, I think they've been addressed pretty much transactions. There being no other questions, recommendation?
It is the recommendation of the administration that the Board of Trustees approve the resolution to extend the current depository bid contract with Texas Community Bank, beginning September first, two thousand twenty-one and ending on August thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three, and authorize the board president to sign the resolution.
The recommendation, the motion for approval has been made by Mr. Smith, seconded by Ms. Gonzalez, all those in favor? Motion carries in.
Thank you.
Thank you. We go on to item thirteen C. Consideration to approve the submission of the Head Start Continuance Funding Grant Application in the amount of two million, four hundred and ninety-seven thousand, seven hundred and seventy-nine dollars with a non-federal share of six hundred and twenty-four thousand, five hundred dollars for a total amount of three million, one hundred and twenty-two dollars, one hundred and twenty-two thousand, two hundred and seventy-nine dollars to Region Six Head Start Office, along with the annual report to public, self-assessment, community assessment, training and technical assistance plan, cost allocation plan, selection criteria, program goals and school readiness plan. Dr. Alana Talamantes, this one.
Good evening, members of the board, Mr. Mesa and Dr. Reus. My name is Alana Talamantes, the proud director of Irene C. Cardwell Head Start. Today, I will be presenting to you the Head Start Grant, the COLA Grant, and our inter-agency agreements. But first, I'd like you to look at your page, and I'd like to explain the importance and the significance of the Head Start emblem. The two squares represent early childhood. The arrangement of the blocks represents stairs by which this can be accomplished. And the vertical stripes represent the child and the parent. The arrow pointing upward represents the direction out of poverty and onto the future because the majority of Head Start students live below the poverty guideline, the poverty line, and that is how they qualify for our services. Moving forward, we will continue with the Head Start Grant. The Head Start Program Operations is for two million, four hundred and sixty-five thousand, three hundred and eighty-three dollars and funded enrollment of three hundred and forty-six Head Start students. Ninety percent of this amount is allocated towards salaries, and the remainder is used for day-to-day operations. For Head Start Training and Technical Assistance, TTA, it is the amount of thirty-two thousand, three hundred and ninety-six dollars. This money is used for staff development to pay for credentials for the CDA consultants such as Jack Hartman learning through music, conscious discipline class, and our Tal Plus software. The total funding equaling two thousand, four hundred and ninety-seven thousand, seven hundred and seventy-nine dollars. And our non-federal share is six hundred and twenty-four thousand, five hundred dollars. Would you like me to read the recommendation or wait to the end?
Questions from board members? Again, this is a continuance. And I guess the only question I have is, you've already gone through an actual audit of the program, onsite visit.
Yes, we did have our focus area one, and we had no findings. Cardwell did very well on the focus area one, and now we're preparing for our focus area two audit.
Okay, and those audits come every, many years?
This one is three years.
Every three years?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And no, no findings?
No findings. We did really well.
That's great.
Yes, thank you.
Anyone else? Yes.
Doctor Telamantes, can you explain what the focus one is so that everybody is aware of where it is?
Yes, for the focus area one, we had an M-DEP audit with somebody from the National Office of Head Start where they reviewed our ERSIA, how we recruit our students, and how they qualify. Also, what our program does to make sure that we follow all the Head Start components, the finances, making sure our teachers are highly qualified, making sure that we are implementing the CDA for our paraprofessionals and providing academics at home, parent engagement, that we follow all the components for Head Start. Thank you.
I just wanna applaud you again with the amount of parental involvement that you have. I know that this has been very challenging year, but in past years, I have seen the number of parents that show up to various activities and are all there. It seems like they, they all, and that helps a lot because of word of mouth for recruiting purposes.
Yes, and we still continue with that parent involvement. We do provide parent trainings via Zoom and our kinder readiness. Everything is via Zoom to make sure the parents still have the quality of the involvement they have with Head Start.
I, and we had our community meeting with the other entities, city, county, hospital. Mentioned the inter-agency group and the resources that are available for all the families that you make referrals to.
Yes.
Whether it's health, whether it's, you know, sometimes.
Childcare.
Everything from childcare to the education that parents are seeking questions to and would like to, you know, empower them to do above and beyond.
Yes.
And, and so the result of that is your program does home business as well, and I think it shows how the family might need some of those programs to assist them throughout the year.
Yes, we do too annually.
Right, okay. We know the questions. I'll ask you to read the recommendation.
It is the recommendation of the administration that the Board of Trustees approve the submitted submittal of the attached application for the Head Start Continuance Funding Grant for the 2021-2022 fiscal year, along with the annual report to public self-assessment, community assessment, training, and technical assistance plan, cost allocation plan, selection criteria, program goals, and school readiness plan to be submitted to the appropriate Head Start headquarters as presented and authorized by Mr. Raymond Mesa, San Felipe del Rio, CISD Board President, to sign.
Heard the recommendation. Is there a motion for approval? Motion made by Mrs. Webb. Is there a second to the motion, Mr. Smith? All those in favor? Motion carries unanimous. Thank you very much. Item thirteen D, consideration to approve the submittal of the Head Start Cost of Living Allocation Grant Application in the amount of thirty thousand, seventy-eight dollars with a non-federal share of zero dollars for a total amount of thirty thousand, seventy-eight dollars to Region Six Head Start Office. Dr. Alana Telamantes, Arizona.
Yes, moving forward, the supplemental grant consists of the cost of living allotment, the COLA grant of thirty thousand, seventy-eight dollars with non-federal share zero dollars.
Questions from board members? No questions. Recommendation?
It is the recommendation of the administration that the Board of Trustees approve the submittal of the attached application for the Head Start COLA Grant for the 2021-2022 fiscal year to be submitted to the appropriate Head Start headquarters as presented and authorized by Mr. Raymond Mesa, San Felipe del Rio, CISD Board President, to sign.
Heard the recommendation. Is there a motion for approval? Motion made by Mr. Smith, seconded by Ms. Gonzalez. All those in favor? Motion carries unanimous. Item thirteen E, consideration to approve memorandum of understanding in accordance with section six hundred and forty-two E of the Head Start Act. Head Start agencies' grantees are required to enter in a memorandum of understanding, MOU, with appropriate local entities. Dr. Alana Telamantes, Arizona.
Here we have our memorandums of understanding with our community agencies representing health providers, schools, daycare centers, and community agencies.
Questions from board members? I think all of us understand. No questions? Recommendation?
It is the recommendation of the administration that the Board of Trustees approve the memorandum of understanding and authorize the superintendent to sign the memorandums of understanding as presented.
Heard the recommendation. Motion for approval? Motion made by Ms. Gonzalez. Is there a second to the motion? Mr. Smith? All those in favor? Motion carries unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you. As we say in Cardwell, it's your free, raise your praise. Thank you.
Thank you. Go on to item fourteen, human resources. Consideration to approve employee job descriptions and evaluation forms for the following. Ade Garcia?
Good evening, President Mesa, Dr. Rios, members of the board. In your packet, you will find the proposed changes for the job descriptions for operations coordinator, custodial coordinator, textbook safety clerk, and textbook safety worker. The two coordinators' positions, the few changes that we have on those is the new report two will be the chief operation officers, officer on both the operation and custodial coordinator. For the custodial operations, the responsibility of asbestos will be removed and will be added to the custodial coordinator. Those are the two major changes in those job descriptions. For the other two job descriptions, the textbook safety clerk and the textbook safety worker, for those, they will be reporting to the operations coordinator. We do not have the position of director of emergency operations anymore. So as you can see in the job description, we removed all that wording to include it to operations coordinator. Are there any questions for these four positions?
Questions?
Excuse me, are these new positions or they're just revised?
They're just being revised. They're just being updated.
Anyone else? There being no other questions? Recommendation, please?
Yes, sir. It is the recommendation of administration that the Board of Trustees approve the employee job descriptions and evaluation forms as discussed.
You've heard the recommendation. Is there a motion for approval, Mr. Smith? Is there a second to the motion? Seconded by Mr. Overfelt. All those in favor? Motion carries unanimous. Thank you very much. The time is seven thirty-nine.
Mr. Mesa, let me, I apologize for doing this, but I wanna back up to an agenda item F1, and I just wanna ask a quick question on it related to timing.
Sure.
And, you know, so, Les, on, on, on that track refinishing, what, what kind of timeline do you have, and is that gonna impact anything that that we've got going on out there on that?
On that, sort of that timeline would be June fifth through July fifteenth.
Okay, so there's no preseason stuff going on or?
No, sir, we wouldn't.
We don't have June, so graduation's over and so on and so forth, so.
There'll be plenty of activities going on at the high school over the summer, but they just won't use the track during those months. They'll use the lower fields. But there isn't any formal activities where we need a track. Should that ever become an issue, we could use a middle school track.
Yeah, okay. But it'll be, it'll be ready by, you said mid-July, is that what you said?
Yes, sir.
It works. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Okay, seven forty-one PM. There are no other items. We will go into closed session. Again, if an item will be taken upon as for action, it will be done in open session. We are now in closed session. The time is eight twenty-one PM. We're now reconvening into open session. No action was taken in executive session. We're down to item eighteen A. Consideration to approve the personnel report to include the following. New hires, district vacancies, retirements, resignations. Ade Garcia.
Yes, good evening again. It is the recommendation of administration that the Board of Trustees approve Rosa Islas, fifth-grade teacher at Buena Vista Elementary. Ariel Pritchard, fourth-grade teacher at Dr. Lonnie Green Elementary.
Heard the recommendation. Is there a motion for approval, Mr. Smith? Seconded by Ms. Gonzalez. All those in favor? Motion carries unanimous. Item eighteen B, consideration to approve the position of vice principal for Del Rio Freshmen School. Ade Garcia.
Yes, sir. It is the recommendation of administration that the Board of Trustees approve Mrs. Jane Villarreal as vice principal for Del Rio Freshmen School.
Heard the recommendation. Is there a motion for approval, Mr. Smith? Seconded by Ms. Gonzalez. All those in favor? Motion carries unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
There being no other items on the agenda. Is there a motion for adjournment? Motion made by Mr. Overfelt, seconded by Mrs. Webb. All those in favor? Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, everyone, and good night. Do remind you, the board members, our meeting Saturday, eight, eight AM in the morning. Somebody will be here. It's open in the building. Thank you. Good night.